And so as John gets up but not seated, why don't we stay at this whole booth?
Let me sit down.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in my nation, on the island of liberty and justice for all. And I call your attention to the House. Hi Jenny.
Hi.
We have with us today Jennifer Gengres from the planning board. She is going to be speaking with us. I'd like to open with, we do not really open Jenny, we do not have anybody present.
Kim may or may not be there. She had some other meeting.
Did you all have an opportunity to read the August 19th secretary?
The only thing is on page two, that bottom, I don't think it matters in the greater sense of things, but you must have written these after Tuesday night. Because it sort of talks about tomorrow and then it ends up in the past tense, so.
That was about midnight.
Yeah, so. On the bottom, that bottom paragraph. Tomorrow's breakfast for dinner, entertainment by the squares, was enjoyed by all. Yeah.
Just will be.
Yeah, will be enjoyed by all.
Either that or just change to tomorrow.
I don't have any of this, Kim.
Okay, there won't be a pancake breakfast.
Yeah.
Whatever.
October 20th, I mean, August, geez. All right, my brain is mush. August 20th. And I apologize, we need for a call from my doctor's office. I told him I needed to hear from them before noon, but you know, that doesn't really, noon, I guess I didn't say which day, noon, but yeah.
Which time zone?
Yeah.
Any motion with the amendment, one more?
I'd move to accept this.
Second.
Who would second?
John.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And the second set of meetings, Sheila took those the night of the meeting with the Rec Commission and Select Board.
Can I change the title of that when I type off this? Can I just say committee?
No, because as soon as you approve them, she's gonna file them. As soon as you.
Because this way it sounds like I did it.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I guess we can, yeah, I'll fix that. Yeah, but she's gonna file them for everybody once all three of the boards approve them. Does that make sense? So you don't have to do anything with these?
I was just, but when I do the minutes, do I have to accept it?
Yeah.
So can I just say joint committee?
Yep.
Joint community meeting?
Yep.
Just leave it that way?
Yep, joint meeting of the, yeah, that's how it's referred to on the top.
We're approving our piece of this.
We kind of have to because we started it and we had to end it, so.
Yes.
Will we write along?
So we gotta approve these. Yes, you need to vote to accept the minutes as.
I'd move to accept the minutes of the joint meeting of the Westboro Council and Aging Rec Commission and Select Board.
Second.
Was that John now? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so I am going to defer discussing transportation because Jenny's gonna talk to us a little bit about the housing plan and then also about the study that the WITA is gonna do regarding transportation. So we'll defer that until after she's done. Community center updates, so. I have so many pieces of paper here, I can't stand it. So I was on vacation last week, Tuesday, so I wasn't involved in the weekly call, but you know, there's more discussion, more discussion. There is, the charrette is tonight, and I'll read you what Kim said about this, because I asked her if the council on aging needs to be at both of them, or none of them, or one of them, or whatever. She said, "Members of the COA are welcome to participate in the charrette process on Monday night and attend the session on Tuesday. I'm pretty sure I encouraged this when we discussed these dates at the last COA meeting. Those who choose to do so will be there to provide their individual feedback versus representing the COA since neither session is a posted meeting of the COA. And more specifically, since the setup for the charrette will be small groups, if multiple members attend, I recommend they spread out and not sit together." So there you have it. I know, I'm gonna have to walk around. You, move. Anyway.
Alma, where is this meeting being held?
Upstairs from the police station in the great hall with the great acoustics.
Tell them.
I know. Need to hang some soundproofing tiles or something. I don't know. I don't know what they end. I'm not a sound person. And I was sitting up in front and I still have a hard time hearing stuff.
Yeah, I did too. You know, it would also be helpful to let the presenter know that it would be very good to have like one of these pens, red dot.
Oh yeah, the pointers?
Because he was talking about different rooms and we should have a triple following. He was pointing from the podium.
All right.
That didn't help us out there. So either he or somebody who's delegated by him.
I was looking at a little laptop in front of me, so it was fine. Okay, I'll mention that to Kim Christie. So there will be another session tomorrow morning at 11 o'clock at Walker Meadow and another session tomorrow evening at Arrive, formerly known as Fountainhead, at 6 o'clock, but you don't need, those are for the residents that are there in those.
At Walker Meadow or where?
Arrive.
Oh, a lot.
Formerly known as Fountainhead, yeah.
Are they doing one up at Delaware?
I have not been part of that. I don't know. I do know I'm supposed to be at Walker Meadow tomorrow morning.
What time is the Arrive?
6 o'clock tomorrow night. But like I said, that's for, that's specifically for residents in those places, so that's not something that you, oh, 6:30, I'm sorry, it says right here.
At Walker Meadows?
Nope, 11 o'clock tomorrow morning.
And we are supposed to be here tomorrow afternoon?
At 2, that would be helpful. I do not think, and I'm not sure, but I don't think Tuesday afternoon is gonna be set up the same as the charrette will be set up for tonight. I'm not quite sure how that's gonna, I don't, I don't know. I'll know later this afternoon, or you can ask Kim when she gets here.
Bill Lanain is a resident of Walker Meadow now, and he's the one I think that was the mover behind getting the charrette moved up to Walker Meadow.
Well, so the one tomorrow morning, it's basically just a informational thing, like we had here a couple of weeks ago, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
I know that they were looking at Orchard Hill and Crossmont, there, Cross River.
I don't know if Orchard Hill has been notified that they're gonna be there.
Not my, I don't know. I just go where I'm told. Okay, so we give Jenny a lot of time and we can talk, and if you didn't see the weekend's community advocate, I'll be sure to pick one up. I heard a collective choke.
What did it say?
I can't be here too long because I'm in the.
Community center price tag estimated at 15.5 to 25 million. Yeah. But I think actually seeing it there was a little bit of a shock to a lot of people because I got a few phone calls Friday afternoon. I'm like.
I also had phone calls and people approaching me, even in starting shop.
I know, you guys can't get away from the kids.
Basically, Linda, I'm so sorry, but I cannot afford the bad. I can't afford it. And I understand, I truly do.
I'm out. I hear it every day.
At some point, we as a council are gonna have to make a recommendation before town meeting.
I would imagine if you're an October meeting, because I think it's the week before because of the holiday. Yeah, so actually it's that day, unless you want to meet on the 7th. The 14th is the second Monday, and that's Columbus Day. So you'll have to decide before we end today when you're gonna want to meet. Town meeting's on the 21st, which is that following Monday. So can you meet before it or the day of it?
So are they, is the town gonna pick one of those alternatives?
Eventually.
Before town meeting?
Yes.
And so they will be presenting an article with a specific?
Yes, of cost estimates and so on and so forth.
And that's what we're gonna have to make a decision on as to whether to support or not?
The warrant is gonna close on, I wrote it down someplace. The warrant is, well, it was originally gonna close on September 24th, but now I think it's gonna close on October 1st. So if you meet on the 7th, we'll have that information, but if you meet on the 21st, we'll also have that information, so. All right, moving on.
Moving on.
So, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'd like to introduce Jennifer Gengres, who is a member of the planning board. She is the planning director. She's the planning director.
So what precipitated this? First of all, it has to do with housing, and that's one of the needs assessment things that came up. But, and I don't usually print 45-page articles off the internet, but I can't read it off the computer. So the town has been working on a housing production plan, and I was really, it was, it's a very interesting document. I learned a lot about housing and who's living here and who's building and who's whatever. But Jenny's gonna address all that. If you want to read this, you're welcome to take it, or you can print off at your own house, or whatever you want to do, or I can print some more copies or whatever. But it's, it's an interesting document, Jennifer.
It is very interesting.
Jennifer, would you like to?
Where is it on the internet?
Am I able to actually use the, is this the projector or?
All right, so with that, why don't Darryl and Paul move over there so we can. You, move there, you, move there. I'm practicing.
I know, I can see that.
I was trying to find out.
I brought six copies of the presentation. Might not be enough, but I can always send more.
Did everybody get one?
Yes, no.
I know it works.
Be giving that a little push.
Okay, great, thank you.
So do I.
No, I can't see. Like I said, I'm sorry if you didn't get enough copies of the presentation. It just sort of helps. It's the same presentation I'll be talking about up here, but I will email it to Alma and, or I can print some copies. And I can also print copies of the housing production plan. If anybody wants a hard copy, I'm happy to do that. Okay. So again, my name is Jenny Gengres. I'm the Director of Planning for Westboro. I've been here a little over a year now. And one of the things that we started working on in about November was a housing production plan. This stemmed from the master plan, which I'm sure most of you are probably familiar with. It was a process that we did in 2020 and 2021 to find out what the town's goals and priorities are. And a lot of it has to do with housing. So this naturally stemmed from the master plan. And what the housing production plan does is it looks at our existing demographics, who lives here in terms of age, race, family makeup, things like that. And then it looks at our housing needs based on that and what we see as a need for housing in the future. So today I'm just going to talk a little bit about the planning context, how we got here, the needs assessment that we did as part of the housing production plan, and then the goals. So in planning, we like plans. That's what we go by, right? And I deal with data all the time. So the demographics, the population, everything that has to do with the town, I can get you the data for. But we had lots of things that led up to this point that kind of helped us develop this plan. And that included, in 2020, the Affordable Housing Trust did a housing analysis and action plan. And then they were established in 2020 as well. So they helped to provide a lot of the information that went into this. Like I said, we also have the master plan from 2021. And of course, you know about the community needs assessment done in 2023. In 2024, we went through the MBTA communities zoning, which you might have heard about, that passed town meeting. So that's implemented, and we are in compliance. And then we also have the sewer moratorium, which is just something that we remember when we're thinking about future housing and how that affects it. So this is a population growth, and this data comes from different sources, mostly the US Census, but there's also other places that we get our data from in the population projection. So you might see a few different numbers. For example, our downtown plan that we just went through shows a little bit of a higher population projection than this plan, but it's just the source of the data. But you can see here, according to the 2020 census, the population was 20,303 people. And in 2050, it's projected to go up to 21,600 approximately. In terms of household size, which is also something important that we look at in terms of what we'll need for housing in the future, in terms of do we need to see more smaller units or three-bedroom units, things like that, we actually see a projection of two or more adults with no children. You can see that's projected to actually increase. And then with children, so that's families with children, is actually projected to decrease over time and then kind of steady out.
Which lines? We can't tell for what they are.
Yeah, it is really.
Which line is which?
So the, can you see my cursor?
Yeah.
Okay. So this red line here is two or more adults with no children. This orange line is living alone. And then the yellow line is with children. And this top line here is total households. So you can see the total households is projected to increase, but then kind of steady out over time. The last date is 2050. So there's a few reasons why we think we're seeing this. An aging population could be the reason for the households with, without, I'm sorry, the households with children declining. And then also the birth rate is going down overall in the US. And in Massachusetts, we're definitely seeing a lot of families move out because of the affordability component. It's very expensive to have children. And so those are just a few of the reasons why we would see this. But this helps us when we're looking at future growth and what type of housing we need. So this is the household income. So in Westboro, the average household income is 133,145, which is the average for a family. So you can see we're not the highest in our area. That's kind of small. Let me see if I can zoom in. Is that a little better?
Much.
Even better.
Okay.
Wow, I remember growing up, I don't think anybody, the whole street in Houghton ever made 145,000 dollars.
So what is amazing about these numbers, and I won't talk about it a lot at this meeting, but we have a zoning article coming up on the town meeting warrant for inclusionary zoning, which means how much affordable housing should we be requiring of new developments? And so Westboro, the average household income is 133,000 about. To qualify for an affordable house, you have to meet a certain threshold. So your income has to be 80% of the average for, in our case, Worcester County, and that's 128,000. So if you think about that, 133,000 still really isn't enough to afford a house in Westboro right now. We're still struggling, even if you are at the average income. But we're definitely above Worcester County overall, and we're above Massachusetts. So this shows what the cost burden is. I'll explain what that means. So cost burden means if you're spending more than 30% of your income on housing. And so in Westboro, you can see here that at the bottom is where they're considered cost burdened. An owner-occupied household is spending, 19% of households are spending more than 30% of their income on housing. For renters, it's 38%. So that is a really significant amount. And that shows us that people that rent are having a hard time affording their rent, affording the cost of living in Westboro.
For a homeowner, that includes taxes, correct, that cost?
That's a good question. I, I don't, yeah, I don't know. This is based on their mortgage. So I would assume any taxes that are rolled into the mortgage.
There's some of us that have paid off the mortgage but are still paying big bucks in taxes.
Then I would assume it would be included. Yeah, I assume it would be included.
It wasn't long ago before that was a lower rate. What's the bank rate? The 30%?
The 30%, that's based on the HUD, the Housing and Urban Development, the federal level of housing program. So that's just their, they look at cost burden as being 30% of your, of your income. You should not spend more than that.
And that used to be 25%?
Oh, it did? I don't know. It's been 30% for as long as I've been around.
Within the last 10 years, John.
Okay.
Yeah. So this shows what type of housing we have in Westboro. So you can see it's, the blue is owner-occupied and the red is renter-occupied. And so in Westboro, we have about, almost 40% are renters and the rest are owner-occupied. So compared to Massachusetts and the United States and then our other surrounding communities, that, that shows that we are really healthy as a town in that we have that division. We want to see that we have that equal split so that we have a diverse housing stock. We're looking at, anybody can come here and rent and own a house. So that's a good thing. So we did a, we did some stakeholder interviews with some of the department heads and then people in the area. And these are some of the common themes. This is not everything, but it's some of the common things that we found are an issue. All housing types have become unaffordable, so it's really hard to own a home or to continue owning a home. And it's also difficult to rent. Renting is not significantly more affordable than making mortgage payments. It used to be, I think, that renting a house might be cheaper than having a mortgage. That's not the case anymore. There's a lack of smaller starter homes. So this is the feedback that we're getting, that there's a lack of those smaller homes. Children who grew up in Westboro can't really afford to move back to Westboro, which is a really common theme that we hear. I hear it all the time. Our families come in and they say, "I grew up here, but I can't afford a home here." There's land zones for multifamily housing, but it's largely built out. Again, something that we do here from the community. The downtown area is underutilized. There's lots occupied by parking and gas stations. There's a lack of incentives to encourage affordable housing. And then residential development has strained infrastructure, including sewer, schools, and public safety. So these are all just things that we look at when we're trying to figure out solutions to housing. So for goals, we want to identify underutilized properties to be able to support any new residential development. The zoning bylaws, we want to figure out a way to revise them to be able to develop and preserve more affordable housing. And I will, just a side note, when I say affordable housing, I don't necessarily mean affordable housing by the state and federal definition. I mean, housing that the average person could afford, not just someone that qualifies for low income. And leverage state funds to support a diverse array of housing options. We just had the governor sign a housing bond bill, so there's a lot of money into that. And so we're looking at hopefully getting some grants and assistance to meet some of the, some of these goals. Prioritize housing that advances regional economic development goals. And then work to ensure that local infrastructure enables rather than limits new housing production. So that's things like sewer and other infrastructure needs. I can go into these a little more in detail. But like for the underutilized properties, you know, there's different areas that we can look at in town that are currently underutilized. Again, we can look at revising the zoning, providing some incentive zoning to incentivize developers to add more affordable units for people to rent or buy. And ADUs, if you aren't aware, the governor is part of the Affordable Housing Bond Bill. Accessory dwelling units are going to be allowed by right in any single-family residential zoning district. In Westboro, we already allow them by right, but there are some things tied to it that we are no longer allowed to require, such as an owner occupancy requirement. So I think February 2nd, that will go into place and you'll be able to apply for a permit to build an accessory apartment or accessory dwelling unit on your lot by right without going through a special permit process. And then.
In that regard, I mean, I know of one individual who has a second floor in his house waiting to be a separate apartment. It's all built out, but he can't get sewer connection, even though it's been a two-story house for 100 years. It's one of the older houses in town.
Is it existing?
Oh, yeah. It's been, it's an old house. It was an office downstairs with an apartment upstairs, but it's somehow, it was owner-occupied at the time. And the fellow that bought the building is still using the office downstairs and wants to rent out the upstairs. You can't get approval because of the sewage issue.
Well, hopefully with some of the zoning changes and we are working on the sewer moratorium, in the near future, we should be able to address that. But if he wants to come in and talk to me, I'd be happy to speak with him.
I have a question about the property that you look at in your goals. The Commonwealth, I think, owns some property in town, like up on, by the courthouse.
Yeah.
There are two buildings that appear to be torn. They're in the process of carrying them down. It's been going on, going for a year now.
Yeah.
Is that property that you're looking at?
So those are owned privately, if it's the ones I'm thinking of. They were brick buildings. Yeah. So those are privately owned. I'm not sure what the owner of the property is proposing, but I don't believe it's housing.
So they're not owned by the Commonwealth?
No. So again, these are just ways to support a diverse array of housing options. The planning department works closely with the Affordable Housing Trust to look at housing projects and see if they can help provide a subsidy to offset some extra costs that we may incur to provide additional affordable housing. Again, we want to support economic growth by ensuring that workforce housing is available. Part of a healthy community is having all affordability levels of income because lower-income residents tend to have the jobs in your coffee shops, your teachers, your town employees sometimes.
I was gonna say, mention that.
Yes. So we want to make sure that we have housing that is available to people that work in the community.
Question?
Yeah.
Under which category do the townhouses and condos fall into?
In terms of ownership or?
Well, in terms of being counted as part of the housing plan.
Multifamily, it would be counted as multifamily. And so to ensure our local infrastructure enables housing production, we want to finalize the sewer capacity study. We also want to consider policy updates and then update our requirements on the planning level. So when a developer comes in, they're helping us with this data gathering by providing the information on what impact their new development will have. So we want to know what they project in terms of sewer usage, water usage, things like that, so that we can plan ahead. And that is all I have for the slides. I know it was short, but like Alma said, the production plan is pretty detailed. So if you review it and you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. Or if you have questions now, I'm happy to answer them. And then I can talk about transportation.
She's multifaceted.
Planning does a lot of different, different things. Any questions or I'll move on?
Are there any factory buildings that are available?
Factory buildings?
Old factory buildings that are available to reuse?
No. You mean old, like mill houses, things like that? No. Not that I, not that I've seen. We do have a couple developments going that are planned to go in. One just was approved by the planning board at 18 Lyman. It's over where Staples is, on Lyman Street and Route 9. And so they plan to do a mixed-use project. So they're planning 132 apartments above where Staples is. And then on the building that's on the other side, it's, I'm trying to remember the commercial businesses that are below that.
Home Goods was there?
Home Goods used to be there, but on the other side.
On the other side.
Subway.
I was gonna say, I was just saying.
I think there might be a bank over there.
I mean, it's a bunch of different little, little things over there.
So 25% of the 132 units, and I can't remember the math right now. But those will be designated affordable, meaning that you will have to qualify to be able to rent those, their apartments. And part of the agreement with the planning board was that it would have a local preference. So those would be marketed towards residents of Westboro, people that work in Westboro, and then veterans. And that will also be something that will be part of the inclusionary zoning bylaw I will have at town meeting, that that is part of every component for a new housing development.
So they're gonna go up?
The apartments?
Yeah, I mean, they're gonna build on top of that or are they gonna?
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you want to view the proposal, it's on our website. But it's really exciting, a mixed-use project. There's so many benefits to it, including tax benefits. Side fact, I guess, is that mixed-use developments are the highest of tax revenue compared to commercial, single-family, and just multifamily. So we do like to see mixed-use developments.
On Main Street, East Main Street, there's an old medical building that's been vacant now for years. I mean, and there's a for lease sign out there. I mean, is there anything that can be done to encourage them to convert housing?
So that's a good example of an underutilized property. The zoning might not, I don't know what zone it's in. I think I know which one you're talking about.
It's next to a video bank.
It used to be found, used to be. It's not reliant.
They've been doing work in there. They've had trucks in there, electrical and contractors and stuff. So I don't know what they're planning, but I see them when I come in in the morning.
Yeah, so they might not, the zoning might not allow for multifamily, which would be something that would be good to put there, reuse a property. So that's something that we'll be looking at in the future. But that's a good example of an underutilized property. Any other questions or I'll move on to talk about transportation?
That's one of our favorite topics.
Mine too.
Just as a side note, I noticed you talk about the tax burden more, divided more evenly between residential and commercial. Well, various cities in towns have tried to do that over the years, but most stay with residential tax rate and commercial difference.
Yes, and we do have the same rate.
It's tough to spread that evenly.
Yeah. So what we look at, you know, we do look at tax burden for residents. And one of the things that we see as a way to offset that burden is to look at projects like mixed-use residential, multifamily, and then commercial, because those are going to bring in a lot more taxes than a single-family home would. And that will help to offset that burden.
I think Worcester, Worcester has a commercial rate and a residential rate. And I, you know, they've had that for years and I don't think there were mass exoduses of businesses out of Worcester when they did that, so.
Just as a side note, can you get CVS to go over my Stop &amp; Shop?
Since Stop &amp; Shop is closing their pharmacy in this store.
Oh, really? I didn't know that.
Yeah, it's unbelievable.
Yeah. Well, it's good feedback. We have an economic development department, as I'm sure you're aware. So that's part of their job is to look at incoming businesses. And if you look at the downtown plan, which has a lot more data than the housing production plan, actually, you can see that what we did was we looked at the missing uses in a five-mile radius of downtown. So we looked at the amount of grocery stores, the amount of doctor's offices, the amount of restaurants. And it's called a market needs, or market needs analysis. And we were able to determine what's missing. So maybe there's a pharmacy missing within five miles of the downtown. So that's good information for us when we have someone come in wanting to open up a business and wanting to know what type of business.
Yes, CVS, where dress by used to be. They can have a driver up on the side.
I know that that's, I've had several people talk to me about, what am I, where am I gonna go? What am I gonna do? You know, they're not big fans of CVS. And Walgreens is in South Borough, but how will I get there? So there's a lot of, a lot of angst over them closing that pharmacy at Stop &amp; Shop.
Stop &amp; Shop hasn't had a pharmacy in years.
No, this is the other store.
Not in Westboro? You're talking about the one in Shrewsbury? There's only one Stop &amp; Shop in.
Yeah.
And it has no pharmacy.
Yeah, so.
Hasn't had it for years.
Exactly. But they're closing, the last pharmacy they're closing. And people are concerned because that's where they go to get prescriptions and how they get. Yeah.
It's kind of the Shrewsbury store.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't. Is the store closing too?
Yeah. Yeah, the whole store.
I didn't realize that one was on the list. Oh, yeah, no, I know where it is.
And one on Lincoln Street in Worcester is closed.
Yeah, so, you know, there's not a lot, there's not a lot of options. As I've said before, someday one guy's gonna own everything, so we just.
Okay. So another thing that the planning office does is we work on transportation, existing and then initiatives. And I'm sure you all know about VIA, which is our microtransit service that we have. So the WRTA has started a transit service analysis, which is basically a plan, excuse me, planning study. And we're looking at the towns of Shrewsbury, Northborough, and Westboro. So essentially, they want to figure out what our transportation needs are and how they can be better. And then what that means for the town. Whether it means a fixed transit route, so a fixed bus system, enhancing the existing microtransit service, you know, looking at all sorts of things. So what, what do we need? Like I said, it will cover the three communities, Shrewsbury, Northborough, and Westboro. And it will look at fixed route, ADA paratransit, the council on aging paratransit, and then microtransit, which is what we currently have in Westboro through VIA. So they'll basically develop a plan that reflects our needs and then provide it to WRTA in the town. And then we will evaluate where we go from there. Do we work with WRTA for a fixed route transit service or some other, some other way of providing transportation? So this is their slideshow that they presented to us. They began the, they call them stakeholder meetings. So we have a meeting with myself and a couple of their department heads on Friday. From there, they're going to do a pop-up at the farmer's market on Thursday to try to gather input. They really want this input from the community about what the needs are. What do you see as the existing issues with transportation? And then what do you see as what could help our transportation needs? So they'll, they'll be doing those two things. Again, this is what they'll be looking at. So something you can think about. They are looking at the coverage. Where do you need to go? What are the, the big places that you need to commute to using transportation, even if it's out of town? It doesn't have to be just in Westboro. This just talks about their, what their tests will be. They're going to look at the existing conditions. They'll do some survey work, which I will, which I will share with everybody once I have it. Again, public engagement. And then they'll draft the final recommendations. This is essentially what they do through a market analysis, which is kind of what I talked about before with the demographics. Thankfully, we have a lot of the information already. But they, they look at the different transit routes and where they mostly go. These are the services they're studying. One thing that's not on there that I'm working with Alma on is the Westboro bus. We're technically not partnered with WRTA for their specific service, like Northborough and Shrewsbury are. But that is something that they're going to evaluate as part of this. Because we do, you do have a lot of rides. I think the numbers are pretty high. I don't remember what they were.
I don't either, right off the top of my, I know I sent them to you, but I don't remember what they were.
They were comparable to Northborough at least. So it's definitely a need in town. So that's, those are the types of things they'll be looking at.
So one of the things that concerned us from our needs assessment was that I think, I want to say it was 12%. Somebody can correct me if I'm wrong. Of people who said they had missed or had to cancel a doctor's appointment or, you know, medical appointment because they didn't have transportation. However, it didn't say, like, why they did that? Like, did they cancel it because they didn't know enough to call us? Did they not like the fact that they would have to ride the bus? Did they not, could we not find them a volunteer because they didn't give us enough time? Like, I don't know why that number, I thought that number was kind of large. I wasn't happy about that. But I think that that's certainly, I know that one of the issues we have is getting people past kind of Metro West. We do. We do go to Milford, we do go to Marlborough, we go to Southborough Medical, we go to Uprute 9 to where Wegmans is, Northborough Crossing. There's a UMass building on one side and a St. Vincent's building on the other side. We do, like, the bus can go there. And we also have a couple people that are wheelchair-bound, and we will take them actually to St. Vincent's or to UMass because you can't get those people into somebody's car generally. But that number really concerned me, it, like I said, there wasn't enough, like, why did they cancel? Like, why, you know, what was the reason why? Did you not call us and that's why you can't, I mean, I...
Yeah, that's good feedback.
Well, three of us have been working on the medical rides assessment here in town. And from Mary Ellen back in June, she said that for that fiscal year ending in June, there were only two requests that came in for Boston trips, and she was unable to satisfy. And that was because they were asked, they called late in the day for the next morning.
You can't call at 3:00 and tell her she'd be in Boston at 8:30 the next morning. That does not work.
And those were the only two that she had any record that was rejected ride. So she had been able to satisfy all the others.
My hope is now that UMass has sort of expanded their areas and have brought more hospitals into the UMass system, like Milford and Marlborough, and there's another one, I can't think which one it is. Sturbridge, no, Southbridge.
Oh, Harrington.
Harrington, thank you. We won't have as many people going out of network or out of the area. I mean, we can manage to those places, but, but my other concern, I mean, we have some people that have taken the train into Boston, but that's, that kind of limits some people who have vision issues or whatever. And unless you're used to maneuvering Boston, how do, you know, how do you even do that? So there is some concern about that. But like I said, my hope is that now that the UMass system has grown a little bit more and they have more access to, you know, several different hospitals for different things, that some of that will lessen a bit. But the other thing is we have got people that come here from, that move into the Willows or into Del Webb or one of those places. Well, my doctor's in Wellesley, or my doctor's in Needham, or my doc, it's like, well, you, you know, we might be able to get you there, but I don't make any guarantees because, I mean, it's volunteers at that point. I'm not, I can't send my bus to Wellesley for one person. That doesn't, that's not... But like I said, we try to encourage them, we have a lot of good doctors around here, so please find one, so.
So they will be having, like I said, the, the community workshops, so they, they'll mostly be regional, which when I have information for it, I'll distribute it, but they'll have very specific topics at those meetings, such as transportation for seniors will be one topic for a meeting, and they'll want to see seniors' feedback on, on things like Alma's talking about. Another one would be transportation for people with disabilities, so they'll want very specific feedback on that, at that meeting. And then there's a few others on there. So they'll, they will be having lots of meetings. They might not be in Westborough, they might be in Shrewsbury or Northborough, but we'll, we'll know more in the near future on where those are.
I mean, we do transport non-elderly handicapped people on our bus, you know, who are in wheelchairs or whatever, so it's not like we don't offer that. And I've talked with the disability, what's it called? The Disability Committee.
Disability Commission?
Yeah, Commission. I have talked to a couple people there about it, and they, you know, it's just people don't know when they, I don't, you know, I don't know where else to... Skywriting sometimes might be an option, I don't know. But, I mean, we've always done that, and all of our buses are lift-equipped, I mean, so I don't, you know, like...
Yeah, that's another part of this. So once we have the feedback from it, I think we'll be able to work together and figure out a solution going forward that's streamlined essentially, so that we, as a town, can provide that information to anybody, and it's clear, and nobody will hopefully be questioning what we can and can't do. So that's my hope from this project. They will draft and give final recommendations, and they'll put them out to the public for comment. So I will give it to this committee, the report, once I have it, and you can make any comments, same with the stakeholder interviews. And then we'll know, we'll have all the data to back it up on what everyone said and the demographics, and where VIA is going right now, things like that. I think that might be it for this. Let me just see, I think there was an area of questions for... So I can, I will email this out to everybody. I don't know if you can read it from that. I don't know, let me zoom in a little more. So just things to think about, you don't, don't tell me now, because I'm not writing anything down. But, and I'll, I'll email this out, but this is what we want to know from everybody. So are there important locations within your community that must have transit access, such as hospitals, senior centers, medical centers, shopping, things like that? So just think about those locations when you're getting ready to give that input. What is most important to you? Ensuring that everyone has access to public transportation or focusing public transportation where it has the greatest need? So an example of that would be, are you looking for a fixed transit route that stops throughout the community? Or just in very specific places, like Bay State Commons, and then the, maybe the apartment complexes? And then, what values are most important to you? Staying within your community's current budget for public transportation? Or understanding what opportunities exist in the future? And then, who are other stakeholders within your community that you want to ensure are heard as part of this process? So of course, I know the Council on Aging, the Disability Commission, of course, the Planning Board, other, you know, other boards and committees like that, but is there anyone that you think I'm missing? Even if it's not a board or committee, it could just be a nonprofit group, things like that. So just things to think about. And that's it. So I, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them as best I can on this.
I mean, I think transportation in these communities out here has always been the $64,000 question for as long as I've been here. So it's, I, you know, and unfortunately, transportation costs money and... Yeah.
Just a general comment. One, I go up and down Otis Street a lot, several times a day, and I always see people walking that are, I believe, coming or going to the train station there. So that seems to be a high-traffic area that could use some...
On Otis Street?
Otis Street.
Yeah.
Train station, basically.
Okay.
Two other parts of the town.
Yeah.
And the other thing, working with seniors in particular, everyone wants to drive for absolutely as long as they can. And when they get to the point where the keys are taken away from them or they, you know, can't drive anymore, they're also at a point where they can't walk that far anymore. So they tend to need, you know, home pickup. So public transportation is, is, you know, for the seniors, the elder seniors or the less able seniors, tends to be more, I would think, something that would include home pickup.
No, that's, that's really good feedback, and we definitely hear that a lot with VIA. They do have the option where you can have home pickup instead of meeting at a location. So maybe Westborough needs a little bit of both. Maybe a fixed transit route and the option for home pickup through micro, microtransit. So that, that's good feedback. I have one more copy of the housing production plan. Do I need to take the highest bidder?
Listen, I read it, it's interesting.
And before I go, I appreciate you all having me here. It's, it's been really great. I always love talking about the different planning initiatives we have. If you're interested in learning more about the BWAL, which is a multi-use trail that we're planning across Westborough, we do have a public information meeting on Wednesday, which is September 11th at 6:00 PM in the Great Hall of the Forbes Building. So if you're interested in that, we have that coming up. And then for the two zoning articles I have on the town meeting, Warren, the Planning Board meeting is September 17th. So you can come at that point and give feedback or make comments, ask questions. Thank you.
One last question, if I may. Coming here today, there was a person, a young person, on what appears to be a motorized scooter. I've been told, but I can't prove it's accurate, that they, those vehicles are being given to people coming into our town so that they can get around the town. But do they have to be a licensed driver? This person appeared to be a younger person and was just going along. It's another thing we have to, as drivers and walkers, have to be aware of, that we're now sharing sidewalks and streets with these things. And there are some communities, one I'm very aware of, where they've become a public nuisance.
I, I haven't heard of anything, any program like that for the town that we're providing those. So I, I'm not sure. And typically, when you're looking at multi-use trails, those types of motorized vehicles are not allowed. They do sometimes allow e-bikes, the electric bikes, but they have to be a certain type, which is a lower speed. So I, I'm not sure.
And I don't think they have to be registered either, those.
I don't know.
I don't think they have to be registered.
Yeah, I, I would say if you see that, again, to maybe contact the police department, and they can help you further on, on what's allowed on the road and what's not.
Yeah, they must have phone calls.
Okay?
Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for coming and your time and information, we appreciate it.
Of course.
Thanks.
And I can leave a few copies of my card, too. I'll just leave them over here if anyone wants to contact me.
Your last name, D.Bress.
Okay.
I just wanted to, possibly, years ago. May it be your last name. For a seaflame from the new bedroom to into...
Glasses go off.
Anyway, so if you saw this month's newsletter, you noticed that we have had to go up on the price of some of our meals at this point.
Yeah, that's funny.
The dinner at the back door is now $9 instead of $7, and what was the other one? The Grab &amp; Go is now up as $5 or $6. I should have, I should have brought Kristen's schedule with me. This was basic, I mean, I agonized over this all summer long, but I know that, and I said, if you read the newsletter, there was a little thing from me that said, if this is a hardship, please let us know and we'll, you know, we'll work with you. Because I certainly don't want anybody not to eat because they can't afford the $9 or whatever. We're, we're not gonna do that. So far, there hasn't been a problem. I'm not sure if it's the chicken parm that we're serving for dinner at the back door, and nobody cares how much they'll pay, they'll pay whatever for that. But, you know, people are still signing up, and I, and I get that, like I said, I agonized over this all summer deciding what to do about this. But if anybody, you know, it wasn't, I'm not making any money off of this. I'm actually still subsidizing all of these programs. So, you know, if you're paying $9 for dinner, chances are it was $1,295 or $1,495. And I, you know, and even John at TJ's that provides the food for all these things, he, you know, he hates doing it too, so... But we're still getting a pretty decent price from him for things, so...
The Friday Congregate lunch, though, has not changed.
No, that has not changed. And then the other thing is that the, because the price of stamps has gone up, we're still sending out about 200 newsletters every month to people who, you know, it's taking forever to get to them. However, even with a first-class stamp on it, it's taking forever to get to them. But we've still, we're still charging $6, and for 11 issues of the newsletter, times, what is it, 78 cents now? 73 cents, whatever, it's still way more than $6. So we may go up on that come January, just to help pay for posters. There are a lot of people who get it online, who, you know, it gets sent to them from when Guido or Kristen or whoever puts it online, they get immediate notification that it's there. So, and eventually, you know, but there's still some, how much is it?
73.
And times 11 is... Don't stop there, Paula, geez.
Eight oh three.
Eight oh, yeah, so...
So you have to go up on the price of the newsletter.
Yeah, we'd have to be $8 to have it mailed, which is still, I don't know. It cost me 27 to get Yankee Magazine, so I don't know. But, and that's only because I've been getting it for like 100 years, so...
So you don't want to stop?
No, I don't. But anyway, so that's something that we will probably need to address for the first city year.
I think it's very realistic.
It is.
No matter where you go, you can't buy a loaf of bread for 50 cents anymore.
Oh, Lord, no.
Shopping and...
When was that?
A long time ago.
I don't know. But I mean, it, it is a fact of life. There's no such thing as a petty candy anymore.
No.
Or a nickel candy bar. It's just the price of gasoline, I mean...
It came down considerably. It came down 20 cents the other day while I was at work, so I'm, I'm happy with the gas.
You know, I, I think that you're making a scholarly effort to keep costs low, but we have to be realistic also. And you can't go to a restaurant and order chicken parm for $9.
No.
For like 17, 21, whatever.
Right.
Yeah.
You can't go across the street to one of the restaurants for lunch for less than $40.
Yeah, I went out to dinner last Friday night with a friend, and my Big Tadik was $24.95. So it was really good, but I'm not sure it was $24.95 good, but whatever. Anyway, so if anybody says anything to you, you know, I, I tried, but it's, it is what it is. The Blue Cross Blue Shield Ready to Retire presentation that's supposed to be next Thursday has been postponed until October. That's partly my fault. I've been up to my eyeballs the last few, last couple weeks, and I did absolutely no publicity about it. Brian was very nice to me about that. He said, "That's fine, Alma, whatever you need to do." So I'm gonna see him tomorrow morning, and we'll pick a new date. And I promise I will get, Karen will get stuff, and the community advocate will get stuff. Yeah, we'll, we'll do it all, so. This coming Saturday, the veterans are doing a breakfast here, I believe it's 10:00. We don't...
9:30.
9:30? 9?
I think it's 9:00.
Why did I think it was, there's nothing in there about that.
No, I thought it was... 9:00 AM.
9:00 AM, okay. The last one was at 10:00, what do I know? Okay.
They told us 9:30, so we're cooking.
What are you having? What's on the menu?
Pancake and sausage.
Pancakes and, oh, they do those really well.
Didn't we just have that on August 20th?
I know, I didn't, no, anyway. And then, other business. Well, there's a lot of good stuff happening around. We've added a few things. The, the AARP Safe Driving Class is gonna be done on, on Wednesday, October 30th. I sent a message to Helen Easton, who's been our instructor for a very long time, and she said, because it's me and because I'm leaving, she had it in her to do one more class. So we're gonna do that. she had it in her to do one more class, so we're going to do that. We have a Halloween program coming from kids from the Montessori school and the supporters are going to do a lunch on Halloween Day. So that'll be, those things are coming up. And please remember that Fall Town Meeting is the 21st, 7:00 at the high school. There will be a bus on the road. I'm basically doing this for the audience at large. If you don't drive at night or don't feel comfortable driving at night or don't drive at all, you really need to attend this meeting. It's a big one. It's important. And then shredding will be on the 28th, Monday, the 28th of October. Yep. And that's always, that always garners a very large crowd, as well as all the boxes in my office that are dumped into the thing that I'm trying to purge. Just an update, last Friday, I met with the Parkinson Support Group that meets at Good Shepherd. It was a great, great conversation with them. They're very interested in the boxing. And I do have the name of an instructor, so I'm going to try to work all that out. So sometime, probably right after, recreation's going to move into the new building, the 20th, 21, 22, whatever, and then open to the public, hopefully on the 24th of September. And we'll give her a little time to let the dust settle and we'll do that. Hopefully, the senior ballet will start in the new building and... Oh, yeah, the one you complained about not having enough room for, Strength and Balance? Okay, Strength and Balance. Yes, that will hopefully move there, too, so.
What about Zumba?
I got to talk to Nikki. I mean, it's up to the instructor. If they want to go, they can go. If they don't, we'll keep them here. But she will, I'll have to talk to her. So although, some of those programs should be starting in the recreation upstairs part of the building sometime beginning to mid-October. So breakfast with the police has moved to the second Tuesday of the month.
Thank you.
I know. Believe me, I know.
When was the second Tuesday of the month?
Breakfast with the police.
Oh.
Yeah, because it took me an hour to get here last Thursday morning. School buses.
Oh, they go to school on Tuesdays?
Yeah, I got in my car, no, no, I got in my car, I know, but.
I thought.
I think it was the first day of school in some towns and I got in my car at 7:32, expecting to be here around 8:00. And I got here about 8:35. Yeah, it was like, I, yeah. I don't know, we used to all walk to one place and pick up a whole neighborhood of kids and now it's.
Now there's just, they don't get.
Yes.
And mommy or daddy was out there taking pictures.
Oh, yeah.
Pictures the first day.
And waving and kissing and hugging and I'm thinking.
Running after the box.
Please.
Yeah, can we?
You didn't do that.
Hit on the box.
No. My mother didn't even know we were leaving the house. She was getting ready to go to work. I don't know. But anyway. So that's, that's what's happening, so.
Prepare to Care, is that the AARP?
That's going to happen.
That's a different one.
That's going to happen on October 1st at 6:30. That's for children or spouses or whoever who are going to be facing that daunting.
You mentioned that last time, so.
Yeah, and then there's a second part to that about finances. It'll be done sometime in November.
Is that preparing for retirement?
No, 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 no. It's Prepare to Care. It's for like.
The caregivers.
Your kids coming to learn how, like.
How to take care of me?
Yeah, exactly.
Good luck with that.
How to do what you do.
Yeah, how to do what you do, yeah, that's. He should write a book.
Yes.
The other thing was that on August 23rd, I think it was, I met, I was asked to meet with the Board of Selectmen at their meeting to talk about how, what we've been doing toward addressing the issues in the needs assessment. And I did a PowerPoint presentation for the first time in my life. It was kind of cool. I was told it was too wordy, so I had to edit, but that's okay. And I met with them and told them, you know, basically, because of what was happening with 1500 Union Street and all of that, we're kind of, like, we're kind of in that gray area right now where we can't expand a lot of stuff, but we're trying to do a few more things. And that we took a look at the things we do and we're trying to like beef up the publicity about things and, you know, let people know about the services that are available and so on and so forth. I have a copy of this. If you want copies of the slides, I can make them for you and stick them in your mailbox. It's not that exciting.
The board inhales.
Yeah, well, yeah, I can do that.
Be sure.
Yeah. I can't read this much stuff off my computer, so I just assume nobody else can either, so, anyway. And the other thing that's been happening, and God bless Stephanie, we have had really an influx of homeless people that have been deposited on our doorstep.
Really?
And thank God for St. Luke's Church because they do let people sleep in there at night in the church. There's no place for them to go. All the shelters are full. And it's not, everybody said, well, the immigrants are all in the, no, the immigrants are all in hotels. The regular homeless shelters that the Commonwealth supports, they're just, they're full. And she's filed elder at risk. We've, like, ugh. Like I said, thank God for St. Luke's because I don't know where some of these people go. And it's starting to get a little chilly at night. I don't know why people come here to Westboro because it's not cheap to live here on a good day. So I don't know what they think they're going to do.
Where are they coming from?
Worcester, Marlborough. There was one man from Westboro who got, I think he got evicted from his apartment because the house got sold. You know, and people come in and they're like, oh, well, I need to apply for housing, thinking they're going to get in like the 1st of October. No, the 1st of October, maybe 2027. I think that the Commonwealth truly needs to address building more Rogers Road, Mayberry Court, Beach Street kind of housing for folks. Because we're sorely lacking behind and there's a lot of people that, I mean, the waiting list is ridiculous. So, but it's kind of, I feel bad for Stephanie because people come in, it's like, oh, yeah, I need to apply for housing because I need to be out of my apartment by, you know, October 1st or November 1st. And she's like, that's not an option, so. But she's, you know, helped as much as she can and... And we've talked about, because we do have some money in our gift fund. But the thing is that to pay rent, it's not a sustainable thing. Like, I wouldn't have a problem coming up with like the first month's rent so somebody could get into an apartment, but I can't pay their rent for six months because that's just not, not manageable. Not that I wouldn't like to, but, you know. So I, I don't know. I don't know what the answer is to this. I mean, I'm not used to not being able to pick up the phone and find someplace for somebody to go or whatever, so. But even some of the stuff that Jen talked about, as much as it's all nice, it's still not affordable for an awful lot of people. I mean, they can't afford to pay, you know, $1,500 or $1,800 a month for rent when they only get, you know, $1,100 from Social Security. So I don't know. I, I don't know. I don't know what the answer to all of this is. It's very, very disconcerting and it's very sad, so. Anyway. So, oh, yeah. On a happier note, I don't know, what do you want me to tell you? Do I have a happier note to tell you about?
I don't know.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I guess it's a sad situation all over.
But if people, I listened to the presentation. I understand it. But if you can't afford a person to live in this town, why are we encouraging them to come into the town? I mean, we have a gentleman now that comes into church on Sunday because he's hungry. And we feed him. He does live here in town and he's not a spring chicken. But that's, I mean, he's an established.
Person.
Person. And.
Yeah.
I find that very sad.
I mean, there, when we do the grab and goes and the dinner at the back door, there are a few, I mean, we always order a few extra meals because we do have homes for them to go to because we need to take care of that. But I, I don't know. If I had a magic wand, I'd fix all of it, but unfortunately, I don't. And I don't know what the answer is to this. It's a societal problem that just, I don't know.
Like you said, Alma, I wish I had a magic wand.
Yep.
Wish I could just write checks or whatever.
And it's every community. It's not just us.
On a different note, may I question, has there been any discussion on the secretary position?
What Kim said at the last, oh, you weren't here at the last meeting. Who asked? You asked or John asked?
I did.
You did.
Yeah, put that in.
They were going to combine our job with a couple other board secretaries and make it a bigger job.
That years ago.
Is that, we heard that before.
I remember the comment that Kim made. She said, "We're working on it." That was the answer.
And that's going to be.
So it won't be this year?
I'd get comfortable there at least until January. I don't know.
You mean this fiscal year?
I'm not surprised.
This fiscal year?
Fiscal year, due to July.
I know. That's what I read.
Fiscal year just started. What are you talking about?
I'm talking, calendar year.
Is almost over, too, so.
This, I think, will be my, I'd say ninth month. But it's my ninth month.
You do such a good job.
I know, that's the problem.
I don't, I have no control over that.
Well, I have, I have one question for now. Does the town hire temporaries?
No, not that I'm aware of. Not that I've ever known they've done.
Because that would be a good option for the, you know, in between.
Maybe we don't want this job, do you?
Well, I don't blame them.
How much, it appears you've got the next month at least very well planned out. You'll be leaving in the middle of November. I assume you'll be here for the November.
Yes.
Planning and have all that done by the end of October.
Well, so this is the deal. The second Tuesday, the second Monday in November is the 11th. So that's the day before my surgery. So if you want to meet on the 4th, I'll still be here.
Did we decide on the October?
Oh, yeah. What do you want to talk about?
Maybe October 12th, the day after, or the day after the holiday?
That's the 15th.
Oh, yeah, 15.
There goes the select board, but, and I have a program that afternoon. But, I mean, we can do whatever you want. It doesn't matter to me.
What's your number, the 7th?
The 7th or the 21st. Those are your options. Because the 14th is Columbus Day. I'd be willing to come in on Columbus Day, but I don't think legally we can meet on a holiday like that.
The 7th or the 21st is Columbus.
You're talking about October, right?
No, the 14th is Columbus Day. I'm talking about October.
Which would be our normal meeting.
Yeah, which would be the 14th, but we, yeah.
Okay, so what date in October? Start with that one.
You all decide. I'm here for both of them.
I'm not here for the 2nd one.
The 21st?
7th because it's a month from today. So you wouldn't go six weeks.
October 7th?
October 7th. Like I said, the warrant closes, I believe, on the 1st, so. All right, so 1:00 on the 7th?
And then we'll have plenty of time before the, if there's anything that we need to prepare for, for the town meeting.
But that will be our last chance and we'll have to vote unless we then have a special one on the 21st.
Well, I think if the warrant's done and it's ready to go on the 1st, that you should be able to make a decision about this on, on the side.
What about November, though?
November, the second Monday in November is the 11th. It's Veterans Day. So if you want to meet on the 4th.
To the same time.
I will still be here. If you want to meet on the 18th, I'll be probably home crying with ice and under the influence of painkillers. I don't know.
That would be an exciting meeting.
Yeah, you could come to my house. You can sit around, sit around the bed and, yeah.
So November 4th?
Linda suggested the November 4th.
November 4th, okay.
Okay with that?
Yep.
Because I have to put it in the, into the.
Yeah, I'm going to put it in, yeah. Thank you for asking.
I appreciate you doing that, so. I would like to meet with you one more time before you part. I will not be officially unemployed by the town until December. And if I am able, because I don't think they're going to be, I don't think they'll have anybody hired by December. But if I'm physically able on some level, I can, I will be here in December for the meeting if I need to be, so.
Do we need a meeting in December?
No, you can have a meeting in December.
Do we need a meeting every?
I can, I can, I can let Linda know after the surgery.
We used to take July off, but that didn't happen this year, of course.
Well, no.
Oh, because.
Community Center meetings.
Following up on that, then who will do the December newsletter?
Either Kristin and/or Stephanie.
But in terms of the programming?
Oh, that, most all of that's done.
We're going to have, that's all done through the end of the year.
Oh, yeah. Between the Veterans Lunch and Thanksgiving dinners and flower arrangements and the fair. I met with Cheryl and Karen on Friday. And then the December schedule is, I mean, it's just, I got to talk to TJ's about the catering. That probably, the Christmas holiday party will probably be on the 12th, that's the Veterans Day. And then the Worcester Menace Song are coming on the 18th. And Mary Ellen's got a, building a boxwood tree on the 4th. And there's a couple other odd little odds and ends of things going in there, but.
What was the day of the fair again? I want to put it out of my mind.
The fair is on Saturday, November 23rd, from 10:00 to 2:00.
10:00 to 2:00?
Yes.
10?
10.
We used to have 9.
I am aware of that. And that is not, I don't, I don't know. I talked them out of that. Because I don't think, you know, people who go to fairs go to a whole bunch of them in one day. At least, we do. So I don't see the need to get everybody up here and here at the crack of dawn because then by noontime, everybody's tired, whatever. There will be some changes to the fair this year because just a number of people that are willing to help and whatever, so.
Yeah, they're waiting outside. Remember last year?
Yeah.
Lined up before 9:00. They're starting to line up out there closer to, and it was cold.
It was cold, yeah. And I also will be talking to Nurse Jim this week about flu shots. They'll be available come the beginning of October. We just need to find a date.
Are those the high test ones?
He has some of each.
Okay.
And now people are asking if we're going to have COVID, COVID shots then, too. And he was going to investigate that. I don't know what the, what that situation is.
I think mine might be in October, but I don't know what you're going to have it here.
Yeah, we'll be, we'll be doing it here.
I would like to recommend Monday, December 9th, for the December COA meeting at 1:00. It's the second Monday.
December 9th?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the normal schedule.
Okay.
So, and the Caregiver Support Group has really made an impassioned plea that I stay and come and facilitate the group until such time as whatever. And as long as I'm able to do that, I will continue to do that, so. It's just twice a month.
Question. With people having left the board or leaving the board or whatever, what is the process and what to replace people?
Kathy has resigned officially.
She's resigned, okay.
And her position is open. I, honestly, I haven't had much time to think about it. I know that, I think Sheila's got it on the town website that there's a vacancy. But certainly, if you know of somebody that might be interested, you know, you talk to them, I'll talk to them, Linda will talk to them, whatever.
As a side note, I know we've talked about reducing the number to nine eventually.
I think that has to be a charter change, so I'm not sure. I need to investigate that. One other thing I have to investigate. But because the charter says there's 11 members and the town by law says.
Who changes that, the select board or?
I think it's the town meeting.
If it's going to happen through the charter, then it's got to go through town. If it's got to happen through the charter, then it's got to go through a town, through a town meeting, so.
But it would be probably the town manager or select board that would make the recommendation.
Because most other towns have, don't have 11.
What will we gain by dropping two members? I mean, what, what's the thought behind it, if you can share?
Going to nine?
Yes.
Oh, because we discussed this before earlier in the year. Most cities and towns here, I know Shrewsbury, I think, has seven, and Norfolk has nine. And then we went to that meeting last year over at Shrewsbury Center.
Yep.
And I asked that question specifically to the instructor that time, and he said, you know, nine is a good number to have on a board.
So, the difference, no, so, this has been talked about before, but the difference between our board and other cities and towns, and I've talked with my colleagues about this, this has always been like a working board more than a ceremonial one, although that's not quite the right word. No, 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 but you know, no, but I mean, like, you know, you guys come in and help set tables and you chaperone, you know, trips or you do, I mean, you do that kind of stuff and you do other volunteer work where some boards, you know, they show up once a month, vote and walk away.
Right.
I mean, you come in and participate and help and whatever, and I think personally that's wonderful. I mean, how else are you going to know what's going on around here if you don't participate in what goes on around here? So, that's always kind of been my reason to not make it smaller, but after January 1st, you can do whatever you want because I have no say in the matter after this.
I know in the past, you've had trouble finding a replacement, so it takes a while.
Yeah, but I'm really happy with who we've got.
Okay.
I mean, who we found. I mean, look, we found those two the last time, so.
Yeah, where were they? Were they lost?
And Darrell got a special dispensation.
Oh, that's amazing. That's probably a first.
That's right. We need your new address.
I have it.
You need the what?
I have it, I have it. I'll send it to you.
Your new address.
Yes.
The email address is the same.
I know, I finally found out how to make you all a group, so I just type in and I get all of you at once. It's wonderful.
It's nice, isn't it?
I've had any other discussions of things to come before the board. Do we want to thank Catherine? We did that.
We can send her, we can, we can send her a card.
Sure.
Okay.
And, oh, speaking of, I did send.
Next month?
Yeah.
About the results of it, yeah.
I did send a card to Marilyn from the council in her recovery from the shoulder surgery.
So, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Smooth.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great.